Today, uh, July twenty-third, two thousand eighteen at six oh five P M. My name is Ann Trong, I'm Mayor Protem, sitting here for the mayor, he will not be present here today. Welcome everyone, include staff, citizen, and everybody, council for the work session. At the beginning, we need to discuss about possible charter review committee and election. Ms. Thompson?
Thank you. The first question I have is to Art. Are we officially at the point that we could have another charter review?
Uh, the last charter election was held in two thousand fifteen. So yes, we are situated to have one, you have to wait two years. So yeah, we are, if anybody wants to make one.
Okay.
And, uh, we wouldn't be able to make, of course, November right now, because we would have to call it by the twentieth, of course, you have the committee. But if you, uh, in the past, we've, uh, if the council was set on that, then we would go ahead and set up a committee to start meeting, and usually it takes about, uh, twelve to fif- well, you were in the last one, you know, it took about twelve, fifteen meetings, meeting twice a month, and getting knocked out to have it ready for a May ballot.
I would like to entertain the idea that at any time that we're in the position, and the timing is such, that our citizens be appointed to the board and given the opportunity to review our current charter, and make revisions if they're necessary. Um, I would also, since I was on the last charter review, I would like to see if, if, uh, it were possible that legal counsel show up at least once a month, at least one time for our meeting during the month. Because there were times that had we had legal counsel, it would have diminished the time that we were working on the charter. It would have been a lot faster and a lot smoother, because we do not, as citizens, know state law. So, and I don't know that that was something that we can do, but I would highly encourage it. So I don't know how other members of council feel, but, uh, we've already stated, like, on the boards and commissions, that we would like to have background check, and things like that. So, uh, there are other things, nepotism is another, um, item that could be included. There's several things, so that's up to council.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Thompson, and, uh, this is my fifth year coming up in the number six. And, uh, after I find out that, uh, I do not know why the qualification for elect official or the election member or the appointed member is so light, you know? Uh, sometime, uh, one time, Mr. Camacho say, "We don't have enough people." Uh, I disagree that. Holtham City, we have a lot of good people, not the majority, not a criminal. So I would like to see, at least, number one. The people who want to get elect for council have, at least have a qualification like the people apply for the concealed handgun. If you convict class B or over, or if you convict class C, this only conduct, you can't do it. For example, somebody throw middle finger, that is the class C, this only conduct. The second thing, anyone in the past already been recalled. I do not see why they keep coming up here, try to run for a council. And, uh, I believe we talked with Ms. Thompson, she mentioned about bankruptcy. To me, I think bankruptcy have to be depend on what situation. Uh, you intend to file bankruptcy to run away from tax, or you file bankruptcy because you do, you are not lucky enough to deal with some business that make you become a victim of bankruptcy, that's different. And, uh, I have three point I would like to mention to council, and I would like to hear from you, any of one, uh, Ms. Brown, Ms. Watkins? You have any idea? This, this is open discussion, okay, don't let me talk alone, okay, and later on, vote yet and say, "Well, I should do it." Ms. Crowe?
So we're talking about, okay, so charter, okay, but bankruptcy is being one of the qualifications of a-
Anything, you know, like, if you have something you need to put in there-
I think, I think one of the things that we've seen in, um, Councilwoman Thompson and Councilman Brown probably have the most intimate knowledge about is, off elections in November, you know, when somebody resigns and we have a gap of less than a year, and now they have to, they got to get elected and then go run again in May. You know, so basically, they're having two elections inside of, you know, eight months. And so I think that's kind of, I don't know, yeah, I think it's costly, you know, for, because, you know, for basically a s- a paid volunteer job, you know, twenty-five dollars a, a meeting, and then some of these, you know, I've spent, you know, five thousand dollars depending on the election, um, it gets kind of costly. And so, if, if we have an opening that's less than a year, then maybe have it where we just leave that position open, and just wait for the next council meeting, because, you know, there are provisions in, in the charter now, if there's a vacancy, and if there, uh, there's a tie, then the mayor cast that, um, decision, you know? And so, I would say that we need to have the charter. If we're gonna have a charter review, that would be one of the things that would be reviewed. Now, the question is, can we limit the scope of what the charter review, or is everything in the charter open game? So.
Thank you.
Can we, I guess that would be for our attorney.
Councilman Brown, I'm sorry.
Can we limit the scope, or is it one of those fears that, you know, if, if there was a state convention that they want to review the, the constitution, they could change the whole constitution to whatever they want?
You do have the option to give guidelines to your charter review committee, if you only want them to look at certain things, you, you could limit them to that purpose. Uh, if you don't choose to limit them, then it would be open for whatever suggestions they have, with understanding that ultimately, it comes back to this council to approve what is submitted.
Okay, ultimately, it's in the ballot.
Yeah, so, uh, if you wanted to leave it wide open, and you might get some suggestions that you think are, are too far out there to, to propose to the citizens, then you can adopt an ordinance that only, that only submits certain of those ballot propositions to the citizens.
Okay.
It ultimately is this council's decision on what you wanna put out there for election. Charter committee is a citizen's committee to assist you in analyzing, and rolling up their sleeves, and, and researching these issues, and then bringing you their recommendations, but they are recommendations, and the council makes the decision based on those recommendations.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And I, just while I've got the mic here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I do agree with Councilmember Thompson that, uh, I think having legal input at the committee membership level is advisory. Doesn't have to be every meeting, but, uh, there are a lot of very complicated issues when it comes to amending a charter, and, and a citizens committee can go down rabbit trails not knowing that they are, thinking these are good ideas, and, and unfortunately, when we see their suggestions, we have to say, "You can't do that." That, that's not permitted, and we can sometimes head that off early on, so you don't spin your wheels and, and waste time looking at things that you really can't touch, and then there's other things we would just give advice on. Some, some things are appropriate to be in the charter, other things may be better handled through an ordinance, and, and we can certainly talk to the committee members about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, along the lines of the elections, I would, I would hope it wouldn't get left out of discussion also, in the case of runoffs of, of doing like the school districts in some of the other cities, and that is go to a plurality vote instead of a majority vote, and save that runoff, you know, that fifteen thousand dollars for the runoff election, I would hope that would be brought up also. Going to a plurality vote instead of a majority vote.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Um, Councilman Watkins?
People want me to talk, they not gonna call on me? Well, I think it pretty much addressed, I was gonna say the same thing, uh, Councilman Brown said, I, I think that runoff is terrible. I think that there's something, there, there's two options with what you were talking about, uh, is not fill in the space. If, if, if something happens to a council member, or the council appointing a place, that's what they do in Grandview. Somebody, they point somebody for, the council appoint somebody, and either one of those things would beat what we did, which is having a, a council race right dead in the middle of everything.
Yeah, one of the, one of the reasons I, I didn't mention that we, the council appoint, um, I think this has to be like unanimous.
Yes.
And so, sometimes we have unanimous vote, and other times we won't have a unanimous vote, and so I figure the easiest, the quickest way to solve the problem is just not fill the seat, if it's less than a year, and, and just let the mayor deal with it, and then, because then I could see people upset if we appoint somebody, and then they become the incumbent, and, and so then-
Well, it helped, uh, it helped, that's what, that's what Gary Nun did. They appointed, they appointed him because they had a vacancy.
Yeah, and so-
And then a few months later, he got to run as a incumbent, which that helps.
Yeah, but-
But, that, that was just, I was just a thought that there's, there's two or three things can be done, but I'm, I'm, I think I'm with you where you just leave it vacant.
Yeah, I, I would just say, to spare the fight down the road, saying, "Oh, you guys appointed your own guy that you wanted your own ticket, uh, ticket puncher," and just leave it vacant, and let whoever wants to fight for it in May, let them fight for it in May.
And, uh, I've been on, I've been on two charter committees, and went to every meeting of the third, and I don't think, I don't think we ever had one where there was, where the attorney wasn't present. Because it, Wayne's right, you get in there and, lots of times we stumbled, you can imagine some citizens that have no idea what they can say and not say. What, what has generally happens is, uh, the, the council appoints people, and they of course give them their ideas, and then at the first meeting of all three that I was at, uh, the first meeting was setting up what was going to be discussed, and it, not to say that you couldn't discuss anything else, but you at least set up, and it, and it, it generally handled everything. Uh, let's see, there was something else. You can have too many members. Well, that, that, when you, when you set it up, you just need to set it up right, because I remember one year, there was, uh, everybody appointed two, and that was the one where I was vice chair, and we had, uh, sixteen, sixteen board members, sixteen committee members, and that was bad, that made it stretched out. The other thing that made it bad was, is that they hadn't set up on the front that they wouldn't relook at things. Uh, so, you'd have a meeting, and, and it was, it was a, it was a pretty evenly divided group. So you'd have a meeting, and the vote would be, you know, seven, seven, six, one direction, and the next time it'd be the other, other direction. It just, if somebody was absent, they'd, they'd bring it up, and it was, it's like you see in Washington D.C. or something, they bring up something if the members are not there, so you have to set it all up on the front properly, but, I think there's, there, I think there's two or three things, but that all this, uh, I think the way our elections are, are held, it needs as much work as anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I totally agree with, uh, Councilman Crowe, that, uh, the last time, Ms. Thompson and, uh, Ms. Brown, that's painful. Just six month, and he have to sit, or she have to campaign again, again. Uh, I, I think the, uh, next, uh, committee need to look at that over and make sure that won't happen again. And I only have one more thing before, Ms. Thompson. Uh, I am favor for three years, because I admit to you, my first two year, I don't know much about the council business, and I keep seeking, learning, learning. At the time, I learned, I'm lucky that, uh, I got re-elected again, if not, they kick me out, and a new guy spend another two year to learn. So, uh, we need to look at that issue. By the way, Ms. uh, Councilman, Madam Thompson?
Thank you. Uh, I would like to say to Mr. Olson, he's absolutely correct, we chased a rabbit, and I think Don LaMaster would tell you, we spent agonizing times trying to go through, and we could only vote twice, and the second time, regardless, that was the final vote on that particular thing. But I think we had eight or nine members. I don't remember exactly how many we had, but it was either eight or nine at our last, and that was nice. So if someone was out, you still had ample citizens there to go through. But, uh, basically, the charter review is for our citizens to make decisions on how our city government should be guided, and that's the most important thing, is it, it is their council, their charter, um, as far as following state guidelines, laws, things of that nature as well.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson, uh, do we have any more discussion here? If we don't, uh, when, when, when is, uh, time we can form a new, uh, board, uh, committee by law?
Whenever you want to, you can form the committee and, and start the process, uh, you can give the committee whatever direction you want as far as, again, what they should consider, or the timing of when you would hope we could have an election. Right now, I agree with, uh, Mr. Camacho, that realistically, if you were to start soon, it would be May before you'd be ready to have an election, of course, you would call the election in February, so, that assumes that between now and February, the committee had enough time to make recommendations and bring them back to the council to include that on the, the May ballot. It may take longer than that, I, I have seen it take longer than that, uh, when charters have been reviewed and amended, so, uh, you know, realistically, uh, you need to give ample time for the review committee to make their recommendations, get them to you, so that you have time to call the election.
Thank you. And, uh, the board member have to be minimum how many people, and maximum how many is none?
We, we can set it up with whatever number that you want.
Thank you, sir. If, uh, we have no more discussion, we will go to item number two, talking to-
Ms. Ryan?
I'm sorry, sir.
Go ahead. You're fine, sir. So, are you saying that we can probably put this on the next agenda?
Yeah.
Would that work for everybody?
Thank you. Next agenda. You got us, uh? Next agenda, okay. Uh, any more discussion about this one? If none, we can move to the next one. We want to discuss about Anton Highway three seven C seven drainage, uh, channels. Must be correct, right? Who is it?
Mayor Protem, uh, the mayor was the one that put, asked for this item to be put on the work session, I'm not sure what the mayor wanted to discuss, but, Greg, I'm gonna have you briefly explain what happened last time that we kind of partnered with, uh, Tex dot to clean the drainage channels along three seventy-seven.
I think this is one of two issues, one on the, regarding the regular maintenance on the drainage channels on three seventy-seven. Tex dot obviously doesn't, they're owned and maintained by Tex dot, it is state highway right of way. Don't maintain it at the level that we desire, or the adjoining residents desire. It was getting really bad a couple of months ago, and Public Works, we called the North Tarrant Area Office, which is over Holtham City, and they had no immediate plans, which was no surprise, to go and clean out the ditches, so, uh, they didn't have the manpower, the dump truck, so, they said they could provide us rolling traffic control, so we took them up on that, and they provided the traffic control while our crews with our equipment went out and cleaned the drainage ditches. So we did get that done, that's probably close to a month now that we finished it. I heard that that was one issue, and I think the other issue that Mayor and Councilmember Nun, who's also not here, was they wanted to discuss, uh, sidewalks at least along one side of Denton Highway, I'm not sure of the limits. So it, it might be best that we wait till they're back at a council meeting, but that's as far as I know on the other item.
You think we should, uh, bring this up next meeting when the mayor and, uh, Council, uh, Nun here?
I say that, but I won't be here at the August, is it thirteenth meeting? So, so, so yes, I think that would be an excellent time to bring it up.
Thank you, sir. Okay, uh, at this time, we have no more item, one- I'm sorry, who is it? Ms. Thompson, sorry, I'm Mayor Protem, not mayor yet.
That's okay, that's okay. What I was gonna say, I had spoken with the mayor about Highway three seventy-seven, and some of the concerns I had, first of all, is the safety, because on the west side of the road, we have the concrete ditches, and if we get, uh, treacherous rain, or we have sleep, anyone could hide their plane or find themselves in any of those ditches, and it, to me, it's a liability, and I just say, in my finite mind. Uh, I would like to see, and I had said, because any given time, you can go down Highway three seventy-seven and see people walking, and there's, in some cases where the concrete is, the, uh, pavement goes, and it maybe leaves only five or six inches between there and the way the concrete comes up on the, um, east side of the ditch. And so, you, you've got two lanes of traffic going, and you're trying to dodge to make sure you don't hit the pedestrians. But, uh, I think it's very important that we look at that, and hopefully, that would also stimulate some economic development for our city, so that, uh, it looks like that we're improving and making movement toward, uh, having curbing and drainage and things of that nature that would draw people. Now, Ms. Nun might have talked to him, but I know that I did, so.
It was at the last workshop, and I caught the tail end of a conversation.
Would it be possible that we could get traffic information, and maybe some way, I think we talked about, um, um, field cameras a sort to-
The problem with the game cameras, we put them alongside, actually alongside the state highway before, and because traffic's always going by, it eats up the battery in like twenty-four hours, so you're continually having to, to change out the batteries. The, uh, I can pull the traffic counts, normally the North Central Texas Council of Governments has a pretty good database, so I can pull that, so, I'm going to speculate that this will be discussed at the last meeting in August, and I can be prepared with that information, maybe look at, if there's a better way to use a camera than a game camera at that location, see if, maybe there's some signs or something that the city owns that we can install those cameras, uh, so I can do that research and be prepared for you at the last meeting in August.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion, Ms. Crowe?
Yeah, hey Greg, can we recoup any of the costs that are, it's, because our manpower, our equipment are being used to clean these, um, dr- three seven, Tex dot drains, and so, can we recoup the cost?
I, I don't think so, and now, being that it's after the fact-
Well, I know, after the fact, but I'm looking, I'm looking, I'm looking toward the future now.
In the future? That's something I can present, and if we're gonna have to do this on a regular-
Yeah, because, you know-
teen basis, yeah, that's-
Yeah, Holtham City has flooding issues, and, and they're not pointing up any, you know, they don't have a plan to maintain their right of way, and so, uh, if it's gonna cost us to make sure our citizens don't get flooded out because of their drains are clogged,
right, I'll look into that.
Recoup the cost. All right, thank you, sir.
Any more? Thank you, sir.
Ms. Thompson?
Thank you. The cost of, uh, doing or, uh, re- reconstruction on Highway three seventy-seven would be at Tex dot's expense, is that correct?
If we can get them to do so, yes.
Thank you. At this time, we have just two item on work session, so the council will reset into executive session, and we will see, uh, our nephew at, uh, executive session on the chapter five five one of Texas Government Code, and section five five one dot zero seven one, and five five one dot oh seven two. Thank you, we'll see you at seven.
Yes, I need one.
Yeah.
I just know. Must have been.
It must have been global, global.
Yes.
Uh, everyone be patient and the meeting will be soon. We are missing our city secretary. He's somewhere. Ladies and gentlemen, today July twenty-third, two thousand eighteen. And this is a regular session. And at first, we would like to invite everyone stand up for invocation and bless of audition. Uh, council member, Brandon Wheeze.
Father, we just thank you today, uh, for the people that are in audience, Lord. We just thank you for them coming to, to here for the presentations and the business that's before us. We thank you for the council, Lord, that you put us in this place so we can serve our community. We ask for the continued protection of our first responders. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored on the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Please be seated, thank you. Welcome everyone here for in regular session in Houghton City. My name Anne Tron, I'm Mayor Potem, I'm sitting here for the mayor, he will be not be here today. At first, we would like to invite the city secretary, Mr. Camacho, announcement and event.
Thank you, Dr. Tron. Community announcements July twenty-third, twenty eighteen, and community projects. Due to ongoing construction, various city streets have deterraced lane reductions and speed limit reductions. Changes to the city major streets are as follows. Number one Carson Street, both directions. Understate Highway one-twenty-one will remain closed for three to four months. Glenview Drive, just west of Denton Highway, at the railroad crossing by Liberty Carton, will remain closed both directions through August sixth. Houghton Road adjacent to Houghton High School is temporarily reduced to one lane in each direction. The speed limit is also reduced to twenty-five miles per hour, and this is, this portion of Houghton Road will remain this way until mid-August. Additional information regarding these changes can be found on the city's website. And remember to always slow down and use caution in construction zones. The Refresh B I S D Back-to-School Health Fair Saturday, August eighteenth, from nine AM to one PM at the Wile E. G. Coliseum. If you, your civic or church group would like to volunteer and get involved, please visit www refreshbisd.com to register. They're still accepting donations and sponsorships to prepare two thousand five hundred B I S D students with backpacks and school supplies. Thirty-dollar sponsors, one student for the entire year. Terry Waters, retired Houghton City firefighter, is hosting our annual blood drive with Carter Blood Care at the Houghton City Northeast Center on Thursday, August ninth, from nine AM to two PM. So stop by to donate and walk-ins are welcome. School supply donations are being accepted at the rec center until Saturday, August fourth, for a new teacher welcome back, welcome packs by B I S D community engagement. Items like glue sticks, crayons, pencils, tissue boxes, assorted books for all, for different ages, and anything supplies that would help, that would help a new teacher prepare for the new school year are needed. The senior center, the Houghton Senior Center, Houghton City Senior Center will also have a hands-on-only CPR class on Thursday, July twenty-sixth, at one-thirty PM, with the American Heart Association, Association conducting this class. If you are elderly and concerned about falling, classes are being held Wednesday and Friday, beginning August first, at one PM through Friday, August twenty-fourth, for this award-winning program designed to manage falls and increase activity levels. This program consists of eight two-hour classes and focuses on simple plans to manage falls. For more information on any of these classes, please call our senior center at eight-one-seven-eight-three-four-eight-zero-two-one. In the public library, the teen programs, family movie nights, super, uh, super science Saturdays, adult GED, and ESL classes and other library activities are all listed on the library's website for their dates and times, and ladies' night out is planned for Saturday, August eleventh, from five-thirty to nine-thirty PM. If you purchase, uh, purchasing tickets now are gonna be forty-five dollars, and there is a drawing for a Kendall Scott bracelet valued at ninety-five dollars. And we're gonna have Donley Master, who's gonna be making an announcement in regarding to a baseball team.
Welcome, Mr. Donley Master. How are you, sir?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, we got something pretty well to be proud of, uh, through our park and recreation, uh, department here. This weekend, they had the softball World Series close in Mexico. And the team coached by Troy Dunn and George Kaufman, won the World Series of fourteen and under. How's that, Houghton City?
Thank you, sir.
That's all the announcements, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Camacho. The next one, I would like to invite the fire chief Perry Bynum for the proclamation. Please come and stand, sir. Thank you, Chief.
Mayor Potem, council manager. Tonight, I have a very unique opportunity to share with the city, with this council, um, event that occurred at North Oaks Junior High. This event, um, pretty much, uh, was an event that changed some people's lives, I would assume so. Not only the person who, that this group of individuals helped save, but changed them personally, understanding that training and actions do play out. So tonight, uh, first of all, before I read this short proclamation, I would like for everyone to stand who is part of North Oaks Junior High and part of this amazing event that occurred, so please stand. To, to my right, this is a fire crew that, that responded first, we sent two crews on full arrests. Uh, to hear the lieutenant say, he said, "Chief, we got there and we just assisted them. They had already returned to spontaneous circulation, uh, the team did a great job." So tonight, I'm gonna read this proclamation, and then I have a, a plaque we'd like to give to the principal, uh, that, uh, we would like to have for them to have in their school, and this comes right back to community involvement, and that's what this council is about, is community involvement, so it's amazing. This all occurred on May twenty-fourth of this year. The Houghton City Fire Department responded to call regarding an unconscious person at North Oaks, Minnesota, located at four-eight-hundred Jordan Park. These types of events, unconscious person usually don't have very good outcomes, as we all know. We have our data, uh, with a lot of work we've done over the last few years, those trends are starting to improve. But in this situation, we had, Mr. Alan Hopkins was filling in the roles of substitute teacher at North Oaks Middle School on this day. They had a break between the classes morning, and he had just entered the teacher's lounge. Alex Snyder and Patrick Linwood were also in the teacher's lounge. Alex stated that he saw Mr. Hopkins walk in and collapse, falling face-first on the floor. Alex immediately responded, rolled Mr. Hopkins over into his back, and began assessing situation. Mr. Snyder realized that he was going to need help and asked Patrick Linwood to call for help. Mr. Linwood then notified the principal, the vice principals, and at this school, B I S D is doing a very good job putting together AED teams. And at this school, they had an AED team, very well-trained, they responded. And I say all this, and this is a very long, um, proclamation that we have in front of us, and I'm not gonna read the entire proclamation, because I want this council to understand that the fire department, we, we came, we did our job, but these amazing individuals over here, they're the ones that actually saved Mr. Hopkins' life. With their actions, because we all train for CPR, right? We do that training. We know where AEDs are, where we work. We do. My challenge to this council, those running the tennis tonight, in our city, citizens in the city, we act when that time happens. We do what you were trained to do. They all did. So with that, I'd like to give them a round of applause and just thank them for their actions. The principal would come up? Here's your proclamation.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, we have a small plaque that we had made, it has everybody's names. Our school resource officer, Officer Cage, was there, uh, he did his job to make sure everybody was notified properly, so the process worked. So would you like to say a few words?
I would, thank you so much.
Awesome.
Thank you. I just really wanted to, um, reiterate how incredibly proud we were of our team. Uh, Nurse Lily Kingsbury has trained our AED team every year, and they go through a pretty intense training, practicing on dummies. And, um, Mr. Ramirez is a part of that team as well, and so they acted so quickly, and we were just blessed to have, like you said, Mr. Snyder and Mr. Linwood in the teacher's lounge at that ti- time and able to respond. The assistant principals immediately jumped to action, so I was just incredibly proud of everything that the team did on that day, and continue to train so that when these things do happen, everybody knows what their role is and how to respond, so thank you all.
Appreciate you so much, thank you, appreciate everything you do, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, council, I'd also like to recognize the lieutenant saying his crew, y'all did a great job and continue to do what you do. Thank you, appreciate y'all.
Thank you, Chief, and, uh, thank you very much. And, uh, you see different, like, fire department, school, and citizen, uh, this, this how to show the teamwork will make the good result for everyone. Thank you so much, once upon a time, appreciate that, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
The next item will be monthly financial report, Mr. Jennifer Fong, Director of Financial,
Mayor Potem, and the city council. Let me get this to work. Okay, we're going to look at the monthly financial report, and I'm happy to say that we have a very good report, and it appears that all the, um, budget are, uh, all the numbers are performed as budgeted. Okay. Looking at the fund balance and the revenue and expenses, expend, expenditures, and you can see that our beginning fund balance for the year is about thirty-seven point six million dollars. And revenue, so far, we have about sixty point eight million dollars, which is about eighty-five percent. And our expenditure, so far, is about fifty million dollars, which is about fifty-nine percent. And so our ending fund balance, um, is about forty-eight million dollars. And the largest fund of the city is the general fund, and you can see that right now, we are, the fund balance is about twelve, eleven million dollars. And we have revenue so far about twenty-five million dollars, which is about almost ninety percent. Expenditure about twenty-one million dollars, which is about seventy-three percent. So we're performing, performing very well. Okay, looking at the largest property tax, and I would, I'm very happy to report that we already collected hundred and three percent, more than hundred and three percent of the budgeted amount. And so you can see the property tax here. And the sales tax, again, we are doing very well in the property tax we collected. Let me see, how much we collected? Still can't find the paper. Okay, we collected, uh, more than seventy-five, uh, seven point five million dollars, which is about eighty-two percent of the budget. And as you know, end of June, it is about seventy-five percent is our benchmark. Okay, looking at the sales tax, again, a very good pictures, you can see that the current year, almost every month is existing last year, and except the November one, because last year we have, uh, an adjustment there. And so this is our sales tax. And looking, um, the other cities, when comparing to it, you can see that Houghton City, for the month and for the year, from January to June, is about eight percent more than the previous year, and which is almost the highest, um, for the surrounding city, except that Richmond Hills has eight point five, eight point five-nine percent, we have eight point four-three percent. But our month is higher. Okay, also, the state controller, um, also sent us the sales tax result, and he was very happy to report that the sales tax for Texas is higher, you can compare last year and this year. So every single month is existed last year, so it's a very good economy for the, uh, for Texas right now. Are there any questions?
Council, you have any question? You done a good job, nobody have question, thank you for job you been doing for city. Thank you, Ms. Fong.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay, we have another report, um, which is the quarter investment report, which is, uh, number two on the agenda item. And, um, every quarter, we report to the council about our investments. And at the end of June, you can see that we have about forty-eight million dollars, um, invested. And comparing to the previous quarter, you can see that our unrealized loss is higher, higher about, um, thirty-seven thousand dollars. The reason is the interest rates keep increasing, that is to say, if we sell our portfolio, we may have a loss. However, we are not going to sell it, we're going to keep it until maturity, so don't worry about the unrealized loss at all. And you can see that, um, we have, our weighted average maturity is increased from three-hundred-and-sixty-five days to four-hundred-and-nine days. And also our yield is, right now, is at one point seven percent, and last quarter is one point four-nine. However, even as one point seven percent, we are still, uh, behind the, uh, benchmark of two point one-one percent, which is our six-month treasury. So also, another thing I want to point out is that our book value, uh, investment went down about two point eight million dollars. As I have explained before, the highest for the city is the end of January. And then we will draw down the balance until November and December, then we'll come back up, because we will spend our money until we receive our next cycle of property tax. So the fund balance, I mean, the investment, the change in the value will go down. Okay, looking at the allocation of our investment, you can see that we invested sixty-five percent in agencies. And we have almost equal in investment pool and also CDs, certificate of deposits. And we also have about eight percent, that is about four million dollars in cash. All right, this is the, our maturity. We in, we are allowed to invest up to three years. So you can see the distribution. We have quite a lot in, within thirty days. And we have some in ninety-one to a hundred and eighty days. And then about half a year to a year. And also, we have one to two year, quite a lot, and two to three years as well. So it's very similar to the last quarter. And looking at the treasury yield, as I had mentioned earlier, that the interest rate is keep increasing. Okay, so you can see that every single period of the interest rate is increased. So you can see that's why we're earning a little bit more interest. Okay. For investment, it's very important for us to know the economy. So we look at the general domestic, at the gross domestic product growth rate. And you can see that at the end of the first quarter, that is in March, because that's all the statistic we got so far. And it is about a little bit more than two percent. Okay, and then looking at the confidence level of the consumer, and you can see that right now, we're just at the end of, what is it? At the end of June, you can see that the level is hun- hundred and twenty-six point. Okay, one more thing I would like to point out is the unemployment rate for Houghton City, which is at three point three percent at the end of April. And the national is about three point nine. So that is to say the economy here is good and people are employed. And the unemployment rate is pretty low. Okay, are there any questions?
Council, you have any more questions? Like I said, you done a good job. Nobody have question. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
The next item, number four, five, and... I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I read the wrong one. This is a two thousand eighteen crime statistics, second quarter report.
Mayor, City Council, citizens, glad to be here today morning to say, this is a second quarter crime statistics for police department. And also included at the end of this is a code enforcement report for a year-to-date. The police department stats are going to cover quarter to quarter. And then it's going to compare year-to-date from seventeen, year-to-date to eighteen, code enforcements, the whole year, year-to-date. Calls for service for, between quarter and quarter, I guess you can see the bottom, is slightly up twelve percent. Year-to-date, two percent. I still find this amazing, how the numbers tend to work out throughout year-to-year. Part one offenses are the ones that are broke down after these first few slides. They were down overall from quarter to quarter, eleven percent, and up thirty-eight percent from year-to-date last year and year-to-date this year. No murders either one. Rape offenses were down forty-one percent and then up twenty-nine percent from year-to-year. Again, most of these are occurring. It's a known member. There's no unknown offenders that are out there. Robberies are even for the year or quarter to quarter, and then down seventy-seven percent from last year. As you remember, last year, we were getting, it handed to us along Beach Street and District Three, up around Stanley Keller and Halton Road with all those robberies. Couple arrests resulted in that and you can see the decline in the crime from that. Aggravated assaults, up a hundred and fifteen percent quarter to quarter, and then up seven percent from year-to-date. On the hundred and fifteen percent increase, eleven of the aggravated assaults were family violence related. One was an injury to a child and a majority of those was revolve, involved a shooting, numerous individuals off Kirby. So that caused a bunch of those numbers to spike in this quarter. Burglary of buildings up fifty percent quarter to quarter and down fifty-seven percent year-to-date. Again, on this one, we were getting burglarized a lot along one twenty-one. There was a group that was hit in Fort Worth, us, North Richmond Hills, anybody that had, it revolved around tools. Those people were identified with the help of Fort Worth, Bedford, and Halton City, we were able to identify them and get them arrested. So that should drop. Burglary of residence is up six percent and then fifty-one percent year-to-date. On the resulting side, you'll see B M V, which is burglary of motor vehicle, and burglary of residence are going to be up. Both of those utilizing that software that we have now to analyze the crime rates and what the locations are. We tend to, it's been in District Three, which is East Ridge, Broadway, Twenty-Eighth Street, all in that area. And it's all related to the game rooms over there, our vehicle thefts, a bunch of our recoveries recently have all been traced back to the game room, which is right there off Twenty-Eighth Street, I mean, sorry, off of Beach Street, north of Twenty-Eighth Street on the Fort Worth side. Theft offenses are pretty much staying intact. The, another thing on the burglary of residence, I forgot to mention, is most of those are occurring in houses that are under renovation or in the transition period of being sold. So it's, you know, they may get broken into and then not be reported for a week or two until somebody comes back to the house. Again, B M V is down thirty-one percent quarter to quarter and up twenty-seven percent year-to-date. And again, that's all grabbing, gravitating towards that area of Beach Street. Vehicle thefts are down twenty-four percent year to quarter, or quarter to quarter, and then up twenty-eight percent year-to-date. An arrest also was made in, like, two people were arrested on this that were doing a bunch of the auto thefts in the apartment complexes. So, and they were attributed to like around fifty percent of the offenses. So those will definitely go down. And again, like I said, the vehicle thefts gravitating towards the Q T off Beach and Twenty-Eighth and the game room. The arrests were down two percent, just ate all, and then year-to-date up two percent. Is anybody having questions over the, the crime stats?
Council, you have any questions? No, thank you, Chief.
On the code enforcement stats, like I said, these are compared year-to-date from seventeen to eighteen. Two thousand seventeen, during that time period, we had five code enforcement officers. During the same time in eighteen, we had three with a maximum of four. One of them got transferred. We kind of stole him. And now he's a police officer. One went out on medical problems, so they were out for a little bit. And then we finally got one hired and he's just finishing up the training process right now. So we were still one down. During those times, you can see the, we're down slightly in the new violations, which are violations, somebody calls in or they go out and check on something, they open a new case, that's a new case. The abated violations are, they were taken care of. The inspections occur every time somebody goes to, a code enforcement officer goes to a house, they, they consider that an inspection. So the initial call or the initial violation, the follow-ups, citations being written, serving of warrants, abating the violations, all those consider a, a contact or an inspection. There's, with the new software, they have my gov, it breaks it down into like a hundred different categories for the notices of violations and what type of violations that they're addressing. I just took the top ones with the top numbers and you can see brush is down, grass is down, but grass is expected with the least amount of rain that we've had. Everything's brown, not even growing. Junk trash and debris, junk vehicles down, parking's about even, and zoning is up. Zoning is a violations of, I know, Councilmember Grow, the dumpster enclosures, dirt piles and stuff like that. Those type of violations are considered under the zoning violations. There's a bunch of separate offenses that are categorized under the zoning. Out of those, warrants that are served is seventeen compared to the forty-three before. Most of the warrants that are served on, in the code enforcement realm is for high grass. We had to have a warrant to go on the property to make sure we can abate the violation and all that. So that's where you see the numbers are down in the grass category and it coincides with the warrant served. Citations are up. And then the liens filed on properties are up quite a bit. You all have any questions?
Council, Mr. Grow?
What's usually the time span? So let's say somebody, like a junk vehicle, because grass, you know, that can be fixed pretty quick. That's something that takes a little longer. What, what's, what do you think the time span is from the time that the individual gets noticed and to the time that is either abated or goes?
If y'all approve the consent agenda following this, it makes it a little bit more easy.
Okay, all right. So currently, what do we have?
Currently, the, currently the ordinance, if it's a junk vehicle, we try to work with them because under the current ordinance, if it's considered a junk vehicle, we have to tow and destroy it.
Right.
And most of these vehicles don't really qualify for a tow and destroy. Most of the time, it just needs an inspection, a registration, or something that can be fixed. So we try to work with the owners or the, the property owners to get it, get that situation fixed. So it can range from a couple of weeks to, you know, thirty, forty-five days, depending on what, what le, what kind of response we get from the homeowners.
And then if we, when the cons, if the consent agenda is approved, what timeframe are you looking at then?
It does, what it does is it gives us a little bit more leeway on the abating thing. There's still the, the state mandates the amount of time that we have to do with notices and, you know, we have to mail a notice to the property owner, the registered owner of the vehicle, anybody, any lien holders or any of that stuff.
Okay. And can we get this broken down into the, the different districts? You know, kind of like how you have it where, you know, District One had X number of motor vehicle burglaries and, and so we could see.
Absolutely.
Because some, some districts are more residential than other district.
Correct.
And so if, if we can just see how this is all broken down.
We can break it down to, you want it by numbers or you want a heat map?
Whatever we can get it.
I can do both for you.
Numbers is probably fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more question? Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. The next item will be number four, minutes. Number five, ordinance number O dot two zero one eight dot zero two one dot fifteen junk vehicle. And the item number six, O dot two zero one eight dot zero two two dot zero one high grass. Both of those, number five, number six is second reading. I would like to take an action. And before that, any council have any question or any correction, something like this? If they none, I would like to ready for action. For a consider agenda. Councilman, right?
Thank you. I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Ms. Grow?
Oh, that's for a second.
We have motion and now ready for a reshuffle. Yeah, three item, unanimous approval. Thank you. The next one, we come to regular agenda, number seven, Mr. Fong, on T-Mobile lease amendment. Ms. Fong, are you ready?
Okay, this is the T-Mobile, right?
Yeah.
Okay, um, we have a contract with T-Mobile that is leasing our water tower to put their equipment on. And we negotiate every year with them. And this time, we are going to change the rate by increasing it a little bit. The reason is, although the equipment are the same numbers, but the weight is much heavier. So, so the adjustment of the rate will be now is five thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars and thirteen cents. And so we compare it with the other city and it appears that we get the most favorable weight. And I would like to ask the council to approve the rate and sign the contract with T-Mobile for the tower lease.
Council, you have any question from Ms. Fong? We see none. And I'm ready for action. Ms. Brown?
I move that we approve the T-Mobile lease agreement.
Okay, we looking for a second? Ms. Water, girl?
That'll be for a second.
Okay, we got second and ready for reshuffle vote. Okay, item number seven, approve unanimous approval. Number eight, Mr. Fong again.
Okay.
With World Bank Depository Services.
Okay, this item is to award the bank depository service contract. Our current bank depository contract with Legacy Texas Bank will expire at the end of September. And we competed the request for proposal process and we received three bids. They are from B B V A Compass Bank, Force Bank, and Prosperity Bank. And after evaluation, we recommend to accept the bid from Force Bank. By doing so, the city will earn about two hundred and twenty thousand investment income for the coming three years. And which is a little bit better, or I should say quite a lot better, from the second bid, which is fifty-eight thousand more than the second bid. And so staff would recommend the city council to award the contract, the bank depository service contract to Force Bank, which begins October two thousand eighteen and end in September two thousand twenty-one, with the option to relive the contract for two additional year, twelve-month period. And also, I have to say thank you for our controller, John Stevenson. He's the one putting all the bids together and also evaluating the bank contract.
Can you show John? John, raise your hand high. People want to see.
And also, we have two representatives from Force Bank with us. We have Austin Burns and also Ben Carter, and they are from the Force Bank. And we are looking forward to have a great relationship with the bank. So are there any questions? And you can ask them.
Let, let her ask you a que, eh, Ms. Fong, let her ask you a question. This bank, Force Bank, is located in Hurst, right? Not in Houghton City?
Where is the coastal bank? What? First or?
Or downtown, right?
Yeah.
And you don't want to deal with our local bank prosperity?
It's, it's not that, because we have to find the best value for the city. Okay, so.
Because that's bank keep complaining on me, you know, you don't want to do with local bank.
No, no, we do. We, we will do the best and we will try to get the best value for the city.
Well, I trust you. And council, you have any questions, sir? I'm sorry, I took your question about on this side. You know how to be a mayor. I have to look left and right about a hundred times, you know? Okay, but thank you so much if you don't have question. But you have any comment, Ms. Brown?
I would hope we could encourage you to open a branch up in Halton City.
Okay. They heard it.
What, what can we do to bring you to Halton City?
Don't tell me I have to close the Prosperity Bank, okay? Don't tell me I have to close the Prosperity Bank, okay? Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Yeah, you know, uh, July, uh, I'm ready to retire more money from Fort Worth to Prosperity Bank because I try to support the local bank, you know, and I wish someday Frost Bank will move in Haltam City. Thank you, appreciate that, Ms. Fong. And I would like you taking action and ready for ratio you vote. I mean, I'm sorry for action. Mr. Thompson, please.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to, uh, bid the award bank depository services to Frost Bank.
And, uh, second, Mr. Louise?
That's for a second.
We have second, now ratio for ratio you vote. Okay, the item number eight, a unanimous approval. Thank you. We move to number nine, medical insurance. Ms. Beckett?
Mayor Protem and council, I'm here tonight to talk about the employee benefits and the retiree benefits. Uh, first, we'll start with the medical. Uh, you may recall that in two thousand sixteen, we changed from Blue Cross Blue Shield to Cigna for our medical insurance. They gave us a two-year rate guarantee and that guarantee ends on September the thirtieth of this year. So we negotiated with, uh, through our broker to renew for eight point seven five percent increase. And that would be with no change to the benefits, uh, no change to the plan design at all. And so staff recommends that we, um, stay with Cigna. Now, we'll have our open enrollment starting in August, which we do every year. Um, the city will continue to pay a hundred percent towards employee-only benefits for the medical. And then we would contribute fifty-five percent towards the cost of dependent coverage. And you'll see from the documentation you've been provided, it's going to provide an increase to the employee. But overall, this was the best, uh, in the city's best interest to stay with Cigna. Now, next, we have the life and long-term disability and the AD and D. So on the, uh, life insurance and the AD and D, the city provides one times the employee's annual salary up to seventy-five thousand dollars in life insurance and in AD and D. Now, that is in addition to the one times the annual salary that is already provided by TMRS for all full-time employees. So this, uh, the, this line of business is very competitive. So when we went out to bid, we got seven proposals back and our broker negotiated with a couple of them. And so we recommend that we go with Mutual of Omaha. That's going to result in a decrease in the life and AD and D cost and a decrease in the LTD cost. So it's going to be a savings to the city, but when you're talking about these two, uh, types of benefits, the savings is not a huge amount of money. So we recommend that that be awarded to Mutual of Omaha. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Uh, anyone have any question? Sir? Yes, sir? No? Ginny? Ms. None?
Um, just for my information, and I know we've talked about this before. But it, is it normal for municipalities to pay a hundred percent of the employee's cost?
A lot of the municipalities in this area do pay a hundred percent of the cost. Some of them pay a hundred percent of the cost, but then they pay a higher contribution than our fifty-five percent towards dependent coverage. Um, so that, you know, it keeps us competitive. I'm not sure that it is a, uh, completely a recruiting tool. Certainly, we, we emphasize that it is, but it may be more of a retention tool. One of the things that Haltam City has going for our medical insurance is that our deductibles are still relatively low. Uh, the deductible is five hundred dollars and the out-of-pocket maximum per year is thirty-five hundred dollars.
Okay, yeah, that's very good. And also, the, um, um, the life, you know, the life insurance, um, I mean, that's, that, that's generous too. You know, um, one times your annual salary and then you get the other. So you're potentially looking at a hundred and fifty, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars life insurance for someone that's been around for a while.
Yes, and it is based on the salary. So like for our maintenance workers, they make roughly twenty-eight thousand dollars a year right now. So that would be about fifty-six thousand dollars of life insurance utilizing both of those two. And then in addition to that, the employee can purchase life insurance for themselves and for their dependents. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any more question? I have one question.
Okay.
Did this carry include the active member and retired member too?
For the medical, yes, it includes the employee and the retiree. Uh, state law requires us to offer retiree insurance to any, uh, person that retires from TMRS. And so we offer that. And depending upon how long they have worked for the city, that would dictate whether we made any contribution to it. If they work for the city of Haltam City as a full-time employee for a minimum of twenty years, then we would contribute up to two hundred dollars per month to the cost of the insurance.
Thank you, ma'am. Any more question? None? Uh, Ms. Brown?
Thank you, Ms. Beckett. And, and we contribute, is that until they get on Medicare, until they turn sixty-five?
The way, the way the ordinance is written at this time is that we pay up to two hundred dollars until they are no longer having insurance. So for example, if somebody stays on our insurance, we will, uh, reduce their cost by two hundred dollars. If somebody believes that they can get insurance, uh, lower somewhere else, maybe through a spouse, then we will pay up to two hundred dollars towards that. Once somebody retires, if they go on Medicare Part B, we would can pay what that is. And if they got a supplement pa, plan, we would pay up to two hundred dollars. And that goes at, as it's currently written into perpetuity until they pass away or aren't purchasing any insurance.
Is that pretty much standard of other companies, other cities to pay for their supplemental? Or two hundred dollars towards your supplemental?
Yes and no. In a lot of the other cities, they will contribute to the health insurance cost for retirees. Some cities pay based upon how long you have worked at the city and other cities pay a hundred percent. I don't think that any city contributes after an employee or retiree reaches age sixty-five and then they go on Medicare.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilman Crowe, Brown, I'm sorry. And, uh, any more question? If you don't, we ready for, for an action. No one? Ms. Brown?
I move that we, uh, approve the medical insurance, uh, as staff recommends. And life, yes, please.
Uh, Ms. Row? That's for a second. We have the, uh, second and now ready for ratio you vote. Yes, item number nine, unanimous approval. Thank you. Now we have number ten, Mr. Bachelor and Property Enhancement Grant. Welcome.
Evening, Mayor and Council. This is consideration and our action for approval of a property enhancement incentive grant by David Dang for DAD USA Investment Incorporated for property located fifty-three oh two East Belknap. The purpose and intent of the, uh, property enhancement incentive grant is to reimburse commercial property owners and business operators that enhance their Haltam City property with, through a matching grant to a maximum of ten thousand dollars. Total cost for the facade improvement is a hundred thousand of a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar remodel project. And if you'll look at the screen up here, this is the property here, um, this is Jack in the Box at Belknap and Midway. It's just this building here. This is a different property owner and this is the BISD Close Connection. These are different, um, elevation sites of the building itself. And if, um, you recall, Autozone built over at Belknap and Baker's Lane, so this is a vacant space in the shopping center. This is the, uh, proposed facade improvement of the existing shopping center. And this is an archway opening at the, uh, approach on Belknap. So that's the two enhancements is the, the facade improvement on the shopping center and then the entry gateway at Belknap. I'm available for any questions and the applicant is also here.
Uh, many of you already know the Bentham Plaza in Arlington on Pioneer Parkway. And, uh, at first, I invite him to, uh, come to Haltam City and build a similar lattice, not that big. But at least have some kind of Asian design to make our city more diversified, you know, and, uh, and he did. But, uh, he want to do master plan, but a lot of item is there, he not ready for him, so now he want to remodel. And, uh, like you know, Mr. David Dang, helping our community a lot. Doesn't matter what department, when you need something, uh, support from him, he will do it. Not only in Haltam City, but any city in Towne County or in Dallas. And, uh, thank you, Ms. Dang. And, uh, uh, council, you have any more question for Ms. Bachelor or Mr. David Dang? I see none. Ginny, I'm sorry, Ms. None?
Sorry, just a couple of questions on it. Um, is it mainly exterior? It's just exterior, right?
Interior and exterior, but the grant is only for the facade improvement.
Or exterior, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and it's, um, it's a fifty percent match up to ten thousand?
Cap to ten thousand, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and it comes out of general fund?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and the total, the total again, that, that?
The total of the project is three hundred and fifty thousand. The facade itself is a hundred thousand.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. None. Any more question? I'm ready for action. Ms. Councilman Grow?
Um, Mr. Mayor Protem, I make a motion to approve the property enhancement incentive, uh, grant for a maximum of ten thousand dollars for, uh, the property for, uh, was it DAD USA on East Belknap?
Thank you, Ms. Row, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, that is for a second.
We have a second now, ready for ratio you vote. Okay, uh, the item number ten, pass with the one, two, three, four, five, yes, and one, no, and one abstain. Thank you. Now, we go to visitation for, visit the citizen forum. Anyone would like, uh, I got one right here for Mr. Water, Water Bill, on Water Bill, Mr. Tommy O'Neil. Ms. Tommy O'Neil, please come in, sir. Thank you. Welcome.
Hello.
Yes, sir?
I was just here to speak to you about this company called Fathom Water Billing.
Uh, can you say where you live, sir, address?
About the Fathom Water Billing Company that builds you for your water?
Y- yes, sir.
It's completely out of sight and out of control or, I have a small chart here that I keep up with my water. They've got me using gallons and gallons of water when I'm asleep. There's no way I could use that water when I'm asleep. And, uh, I've had, uh, that's, uh, Mr. Phelps in Sedonia and David Cummings came to my house, checked the meter and said it was accurate, but I still don't see how I could use that much water. They've, uh, I got a, got on there today, they, it has a forecast for your upcoming bill. They've got me saying that bill is going to be two hundred and eighty-five dollars. There's no way, I mean, there's no way. It's never been that high, ever. I've lived here for twenty-five years. Never been that high. I mean, I can see in the wa, in the summertime, it's bad when your electric bill and your, and your gas bill together is not as high as the water bill. That's sad.
May I ask you, uh, Mr. Rex Feld already worked with you on this deal or no? You already met him?
Who's that?
Mr. Rex Feld.
Oh, yes. And he came to my house along with the?
Yes, sir, and you're not satisfied what he explained to you or?
That doesn't solve the problem. I mean, but, if they, they, they say you're considering going up another fourteen percent on the water. That's just, it's, it's going to price, uh, people on self-security is going to price employment out of Haltam City.
Yes, sir.
Including me, and I've been here twenty-five years. If you're on self-security, you can't pay three hundred dollar a month water bill.
Yes, sir. Let I, let me, the city manager will, uh, talk to you about this one.
Okay.
Okay, sir.
You want to see him after meeting or?
Sure, I can just correct one thing really quickly. Your, the fourteen percent increase you're talking about is for sewer.
I'm kind of hard to hear and I'm sorry.
The fourteen percent increase that you attributed to water, that's actually the sewer proposed increase. The water is for?
It makes, it's a well-to-be, whatever it is.
Right. And, and I don't know if you know or not, but we, we get our water and sewer treatment through the city of Fort Worth. We're a wholesale customer, so we pass along charges. And again, that's just proposed to the council, doesn't mean it's passed yet, so.
I could understand if it were just me, but I know I've talked to many, many people and there's many people on social media. Somebody wasn't me, that somebody turned this into, uh, that, uh, NBC Five response. And they've invited me to go to the meeting, I don't, I doubt if I'll go, but, but they're talking about, uh, uh, and, like, I guess it'd be on television about it, I don't know. But, uh, that, that's just my concern, I mean, it's, it's going to price people out of Haltam City.
Yes, sir, thank you. And, uh, let me talk to him and, Ms. Lynn, I believe we have some, uh, meeting on, uh, July thirty or thirty-fifth with, uh, uh, Fathom customer, right, or Mr. Feld? I saw an email.
Uh, we don't have a meeting. They actually scheduled a meeting with, I believe, uh, themselves along with possibly a reporter. I know that Rex has contacted NBC to meet with the reporter.
Somebody did, it wasn't me, somebody did. I've been, been invited to go to a meeting, was, NBC is going to be there and to talk about Fathom.
Yes, sir.
So. So I know it's just not me.
Yes, sir. I hear you. Thank you. Appreciate that. Anyone in Orion would like to speak in front of the council? I see. Are you, sir? Ms., Ms., Ms. David, I'm sorry, sir. Go ahead, sir. Yeah, you. Would you please say your name and where you live, sir?
My name is Michael Water. I live at thirty thirty-six Cary Lane. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council. Um, I have a couple of, uh, matters I want to discuss. Uh, I live on a segment of Fossil Creek that's, as far as I know, is one of the few segments that's been undeveloped. Uh, particularly between the five thousand block of, uh, Fossil Drive and, um, Walthall Drive. Uh, Fossil Creek takes a turn from going east to the south, about a hundred meters, uh, north of my property. The part, the matter I want to discuss is directly across the creek, uh, for my property, there's a main, there's a sewer main. Now, I discussed this with Tom Muir, uh, in the past and Tom Ice, um, down on Ha, on Hollis Boulevard. Um, when there's a torrential rain, the water sort of ricochets where the creek turns from east to south and it comes back towards my property. Well, in addition to when the creek really rises, uh, the sewer main pushes the water up onto my property. Well, that resulting factor is from when the city widened the creek back in two thousand. They parked their heavy equipment on my property and in that process, they graded sort of a wheelchair-like ramp from the creek up to the bank. So there's not really a bank directly across the creek from the sewer main, which allows the water like to come up onto my property, maybe as far as, uh, two hundred feet. Um, I just discussed this years ago when Mr. Muir was the city manager. Um, and I told him, I said, you know, this, the bank where it was just planned off was where the heavy equipment was used to park on my property. Well, they never reestablished a bank, there's just like a wheelchair-like slope. And it's directly across from the sewer main, which allows the water to come significantly up onto my property. Um, over the years, because I haven't had any response, I've, uh, sort of cross-hatched, uh, trees and debris that washed up on my property in sort of a makeshift bank to keep my property from eroding. Um, I know there was some discussion on, uh, whether or not they were going to develop that particular segment of the creek because the banks are so high. Uh, might take some kind of engineering marvel, you know, to complete it. Is, has there been any, uh, updates on what they're going to do with that particular segment of Fossil Creek? I know that they, uh, they announced some type of walkway that was going to extend, uh, all the way from maybe the Beet Street corridor, uh, by Haltam Junior High, uh, to the southeast on, between Haltam Road down to the bridge on, uh, Belknap Street.
Ms. Lynn?
We can get your information and I'll get with our public works director and we'll give you a call.
Okay.
Just make sure he has your number.
Alright, good deal.
Yeah, uh, yeah, before you leave, let I ask you, you had a problem during the storm or just drug, I mean, normal raining day?
Um, particularly the, the storm that, um, washed out the NEO ballparks back, I guess that was in two thousand seven, uh, about maybe seven, ten years ago. Um, that's when I- Um, that's when I noticed the most significant, uh, potential, you know, for my home to flood. Um, and like I said, it's, um, it's really just a result of where the, uh, the bank was sort of leveled to provide a ramp for the, uh, industrial, you know, vehicles to be parked on my property when that part, segment of the creek was being widened.
Yes, sir.
And without a bank there, the water is just pushed directly across, you know, from the sewer main on the other side of the, uh, creek from my property and it just comes up onto my property. And, uh, you know, like I said, I've discussed the matter, you know, several times over a course of maybe eight, ten years and still gone unresolved.
Thank you, sir. We take your concerns seriously and, uh, the city manager will, uh, discuss with the, uh, public work and see what we can do about that. Okay, sir?
Outstanding.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to talk about this? And, uh, in none? Oh, I'm, uh, I'm sorry, Ms. David Dang. Would you really come in?
Yes, sir. Madam David Dang. First, would I thank you, the city, for, uh, give me all the help and give me the pleasure and benefit to do business in Halton City for almost twenty-one year. The B C keep growth. And as you hear, we had a master plan to develop, look like this. And it will be beautiful. We grow being there in, um, mo- so then it may be not been in my, uh, recently finished the project in Arlington, but we will almost duplicate what I successfully finished in, uh, Arlington. And hopefully, uh, this is not an easy job. As you may notice, the construction costs in last year now raised about thirty-three percent. So, this project, it will cost me about half million dollar more than what I proposed in last year. But I, I promise you, I will, will get it done. So, I just hope and wish that the city staff will help me a hand. Not necessarily all the money, it's just all the good idea and guidance to figure out I can finish the project, uh, as quick as I can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. David Dang. And, uh, anyone else? If not, uh, the, uh, we, I'm close at the, uh, eight fourteen on the visitor forum. Uh, item eleven, future agenda, discuss. Anyone would like to have anything discuss on next agenda? Ms., uh, Watkins?
No, no, no. Excuse me. I was?
Okay, sir.
This is dis-
Ms. We? Yes, sir. Right.
This is discussing the work session. I'd like to see the, uh, Charter Review Committee be on the next agenda. Item?
Anyone else? No. Okay. We move to item number twelve, registration of board and commission. Anyone have what? Yeah. We have three. And Ms. Watkins?
Yes, I, um, I have, uh, one member of the Animal Advisory Committee, Mary Lee Wells, has had to resign. She moved out of the city and got a day job and didn't have time. She didn't think she could do what she needed to do on that, on that committee.
Okay, uh, we have another one, uh, E Jean, uh, Bernard. And the third one, E Jam White. We have three of them. And I need, uh, your vote. Okay. Thank you. You have any, uh, appointment or reappointment? Ms. Thompson?
Thank you. I would like to make an appointment to the CCPD red light and that would be Mr. Scott Barilo. And I would like to transfer from Planning and Zoning to the Zoning Bo- Board of Adjustments, Kyle Smith.
Okay. We have two. And from Ms. Thompson, would you reassure your vote, please?
Ms. Tom, Ms. Uh, would you repeat the second one? The second?
Uh, Kyle Smith currently serves on Planning and Zoning. I would like to transfer him to the Zoning Board of Adjustments.
Ms., uh, Row? Okay. Thank you. Any more? Ms. Watkins?
I was fortunate enough to find someone to take, uh, Mary Lee's place, somebody that works with Mary Lee. Uh, Mr. Wees can help me. Is that Latin or Layton?
I usually say Latin.
Patty Latin? Uh, you have her, uh?
Yes, it's, it's in there.
Paperwork? She's, uh, she's got, she's got extensive, uh, she's done extensive work for Rescue Service. And she's a pretty good singer too, you know? She sings with Councilmember Weest at Al.
Okay.
Patty Latin to Animal Control. Tell them to vote for Patty Latin for Al.
Okay, uh, you go ahead, uh, vote for the animal controller. Thank you. Any more appointment? Ms. Girl?
I have one. Um, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I would like to nominate Mr. Brent Weest, uh, for the Ters Board to occupy the third seat or place three.
Okay. And, uh, go ahead, reassure your vote. Thank you. We got it. And any more? None? Now, the, uh, execute absent of council member. We have mayor absent tonight and with? We need to make, uh, move to approve his absence. Anyone? Ms. Girl?
I would like to make a motion that we approve mayor's absent from today's meeting.
Ms. Thompson?
Thank you. And that is for a second.
Okay. Reassure your vote, please. Ms. Watkins? Okay. Unanimous approval. Thank you. Fourteen. Okay.
We don't have an executive session, but we're gonna take action from the prior.
Okay. We, uh, have one item to take an action on executive session and on the property at fifty-two sixteen Denton Highway. Ms. Girl?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I would make a motion that we approve the purchase of the property at fifty-two sixteen Denton Highway.
Thank you, Ms. Girl. Uh, look for a second? Wees?
That's for a second.
Thank you. We have a second. Reassure your vote, please. Okay. This is unanimous, uh, approval. Thank you. We, uh, adjourn at the, uh, eight twenty-one and thank you very much. See you next meeting.